Welcome to the June 8, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearing must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Well done. We'll move on. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th and May 11th?
So moved, sir.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
A second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you. City Manager, I believe you moved to Boards and Commissions.
Yes, sir. The first item for tonight is Item 6A, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission's semi-annual report as written. This is included in your agenda packet. No action is required.
Thank you, sir. We move to 6B.
Titusville Environmental Commission Member Michael Majak has requested a leave of absence for July, August, September, and October regular TEC meetings. Member Majak stated that he will be living out of the state during this period of time.
Member Majak, is there anything you want to say? I think I just made you a member, too. You said Member Majak.
Well, I would like to stay on the TEC.
Is that on? I don't know if that's on. Okay, thank you.
Now it is.
All right, brother.
I would like to stay on the TEC, but obviously not being here prevents me from actually attending the meetings in person. I am hopeful that with the cabin that we've purchased that we'll be able to gain internet access, and then I can zoom into the meetings when they're here so I can still participate. At least, that's my plan.
Right, right. Absolutely.
If that's acceptable, then...
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll move that through right here. Thank you. Counsel? Any Vice Mayor?
You want a motion?
Let me... Sorry, any cards?
We have one card. Stan Johnson.
Stan Johnson. Then we'll go from there. We will go to motion, and we'll move on that.
Stan Johnson, professional engineer. I've been to a number of TEC meetings, and I've been here when similar requests have been made. Alex Chamberlain has made this request numerous times over the years where he generally goes to, goes up to Virginia, plays with his cows up there for months. So I should, I'm requesting that you certainly approve Mr. Majak's request. He's been very faithful to provide very good information and work hard, like solar and so forth like that. He's done a good job. So keep him on there and encourage him. That's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Before I even do that, I would mention, as we speak about Mr. Majak, and I'll move on quickly. Mr. Majak gave me the coolest environmental tour around Titusville, about two and a half hours' worth, and I'm not sure we had the air conditioner working full blast, but we were doing okay. With that, Counsel?
I'd make a motion to approve Mike Majak's four-month leave of absence from July 2021 through October 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Majak. Appreciate it. City Manager?
Your next item is petitions and requests from the public present on non-agenda items.
Petitions and requests from the public.
Tony Shapolo, 715 Tropic Street, one of 11 locally designated historic structures in Titusville. I've come before you many times about many different issues in Titusville, and the thing that I've been harping on the most recently is a podium for the people, and I've come tonight merely to say, "Thank you so much for this luxurious, large enough to put documents and notes, notepads and notebooks, glasses and other things. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, staff, for making this possible, and I shan't argue about a podium any longer."
Well done. I liked your setup. That was pretty cool. You were rolling. You had that planned.
And Mayor, and Counsel, just, this might be a proper time to, this is the last meeting that we'll have. Of course, you're going on recess, but the next meeting in July, the seating will be back to full capacity. We are looking at changing these tables out because they are rather large, as well as providing additional tables for staff that will match the podium. So we're trying to do some changes as a result of learning.
Very good. Very good. I appreciate you saying that. And I will say that there has been discussion on the podium early. I think there were some people who had some concerns about the podium, and City Manager was open enough and nice enough to say, "What do we think?" And certainly, I would, you know, I kind of liked the last podium, but it was about a ton and a half and, you know, huge, looked like a boat. But I think that works, and Stan commented on it earlier as well. So I appreciate that very much. Stan, come on up.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm a professional engineer and lived here about 50 years, and a professional engineer for 45 years. I think since you're not going to have a meeting, this is an opportunity for you to go ahead and terminate City Manager, because, you know, he's going to be looking for a pension and so forth. It's going to be, pretty soon he's going to be, what do you call it, vested, and I don't want to give him another million dollars for what he's doing. So I'll read to you something that I sent to you, May the 25th, and it says, it says, as far as this council here exists, "Failure to respond to questions concerns at the January 12th Council Meeting Regarding City's Failure and City's Continued Lice," and that's Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Larisse, about containing sewage in city's secret illegal discharge of sewage into the river, failure to return phone calls and respond to emails, failure, refusal to view the secret discharge of sewage into the river. You know, I contacted the city attorney and the council members and so forth, so they could watch it. And so now the reports, it just, they never change. Disregard for human health and safety by failure to shut off fountains and so forth. So anyhow, I've got, you've seen these. You've seen these before. This has to do with sewage spray, spraying the public with sewage. This is a, this is a sign that was, I had in front of one of the fountains, and this is another one of the signs. I had this sign also, and this is signed and sealed and so forth. Talks about the sewage is still going into the river, signed and sealed by me. It's contrary to the reports. So what these signs say, what these signs say is, I've got about a dozen signs, and they say the same thing. These signs say the same thing. They say, "The city of Titusville is dishonest, 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 and you're hiding the facts. You're not telling the truth. You do it over and over and over again, and doesn't, doesn't correct." So you're in trouble. I'm looking for a time that I can take you to court. You go to court, and I'll put you, you'll be put on the stand. And by golly, so here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to read you your rights again. It's, I just read them to you on the CRA meeting. It says, "You have the right to remain silent," because I'm, we're asking for an investigation, me and other people. And also, we're going to have this administrative hearing that we're going to do. What the Miranda Rights states is, "You have the right to remain silent. Anything you can and will be used that you say can and will be used against you in the court of law. You have the right to talk to a lawyer and have him present with you while you are being questioned. If you cannot afford to hire a lawyer, one will be appointed to represent you before any question if you wish. You can decide at any time to exercise these rights, and I'll answer any question or make any statement." You guys are not taking this seriously. This has been going on. You don't discuss it. I'm asking for two more minutes.
I see none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for, yeah, come on up. Petitions and requests from the public.
You never know. You never know. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's John Nyland, and I live here in Brevard County. I'd like to preface my remarks with that I believe every person on this dais has the best interest of their community at heart. I'm here tonight to discuss why the council is allowing the public water system to be used as a delivery vehicle, to require every man, woman, and child, regardless of age, physical condition, to drink water that contains approximately 0.7 parts per million of fluoride. Counsel members, the cold hard truth is that you are not treating the water with fluoride. You are treating the people with fluoride. The truth is that you are not putting fluoride in the public water system. You are putting hydrofluoric salicylic acid. The fact is that hydrofluoric salicylic acid is a toxic waste byproduct of Florida's phosphate industry. More to the point, you are prescribing fluoride to the residents. You are using your water supply to deliver medical treatment. Fluoride is not an essential nutrient, nor is it a vitamin. Fluoride is the only chemical added to our water supply for the purpose of medical treatment. Let me repeat that point. Fluoride is the only chemical added to our water supply for the purpose of medical treatment. The FDA recognized that fluoride is a drug. Its official designation is unapproved new drug when it is used to prevent disease. No disease, not even tooth decay, is caused by a fluoride deficiency. We need good dentists and good politicians to move this country forward. If we need dental care, we'll go to our dentists. If we need our roads and bridges repaired, we'll go to our elected officials. If we want our children to use fluoride as a medical treatment, we'll go to the drugstore and buy fluoridated toothpaste. How in the world did we wind up in having our elected officials prescribing medications? Let the people decide if they want fluoride in their drinking water. Do what MIMs is doing. Put a ballot in with your next water bill and let the people vote. In this country, we believe in and practice informed consent. Doctors have a sworn duty to inform their patients of both the positive and negative aspects of any medication or drug that they are prescribing. Forcing people to ingest fluoride is a massive betrayal of the public trust. The reason this insanity has gone on for so long is because we have not been honest with the people, but more importantly, we haven't been honest with ourselves. Tell the people you made the medical decision to force everyone in this community to drink fluoride. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Petitions or requests?
Michael Majak, Alpine Lake, Titusville. Fluoride has been in our water systems for 75 years. It's recommended by the CDC. I think that's all that needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Majak. That's a record there. 12 seconds. Anybody else? Petitions or requests? Okay, with that, City Manager, consenting?
On to consent. Counsel members, do you have any questions of staff on any of the consent agenda items?
I do not.
Counsel, do you want to pull any items? Clerk, are there any cards on the consent agenda items?
Yes, one individual has five items they'd like to speak on.
So Counsel, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, Adopt Resolution 192021, Advisability for Right-of-Way, Application Number 1-2021. Consent agenda item 8B, Accept Grant Funding for the 2021 United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownsfield Community-Wide Assessment Grant. Consent agenda item 8C, Approve Budget Amendment for the Solid Waste Vehicle Purchases. Consent agenda item 8D, Approve the Award of the Generator Maintenance Contract for Water Resources. Consent agenda item 8E, Approve the Purchase of Software Upgrades for the Water Reclamation Facility Operating Systems. Consent agenda item 8F, Approve the Lease Acquisition of Two Sweep, Street Sweepers.
There you go. Counsel, any comments? I see none. Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnson?
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'll try to make this quick as I go over them quickly here, is that if you want to take a note on this, 8A is, I'm for that one. 8B, I'm opposed. 8C, I'm opposed. 8D, I'm opposed. 8E, I'm opposed. 8F, I'm not even, I don't have a card for. So let's look at some of these that I oppose. Actually, I'm opposing these four items, B, C, D, and E, because of, we have someone who is, who's been dishonest to me repeatedly and dishonest to the council who's handling all this money, big time. Mr. Stauffer over here, Mr. Sean Stauffer, registered professional engineer. So back in August of 2012, he spoke to me and my wife, Mark Ryan, and in there also was Woody Rice, and Lorraine Geis, and Jose Santiago. He lied to us. He lied to us big time. So was it important lie, or was it just, what was it a, what do you call it, a little white lie? No, it wasn't a white lie. It was a big lie that continues today. Here's what he lied about. I don't know, I don't know if y'all listened to this. What's her name? Left. It doesn't surprise me. So the question was, does the city of Titusville, does the city of Titusville have any information that disputes the firm apps? Does the city, does the city of Titusville have any information especially about the improvements that are going on at the senior center? Does the city of Titusville have any information on the, on the, what do you call, on the construction, design construction of the dam at the end of Carol Avenue, which they don't because it was destroyed? They as-built in, in 2010, or was it 2009 or 2010, it was as-built, and then by 2012, all the records are gone. Of course, they're gone, because the dam is designed to flood private property. You've got to throw it away. So that's one of the things. So, but, but on the other, other end is that what happened is that, like for residents in Baker Subdivision and so forth, and Parkland Estates, and some other places, actually, nine square miles of water shares in city Titusville, the city has a report called the 1985 Freshwater Management Study. It disputes the flood zones, big time, big time, big time. Mr. Stauffer said nothing about it. Nothing about it. Nothing to FEMA. So FEMA wasn't there at the time, but FEMA never got the information. Beg and beg and beg, no, city's not going to give them the information. City's going to continue. So what we did in 2014 is that finally, is that, is that Mark Ryan got fed up with it. Just got fed up with it. And so he went ahead and he submitted to FEMA. He said it meant about Baker Subdivision, him and Woody Rice. He got just fed up with it.
Stop clock. Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about his dishonesty. See, that, that has to do with four of these items, and I'm telling you how dishonest he is, how he caused the city probably...
Try to tie, try to tie him into whatever, like, because you got...
I don't have much time left anyways.
No, well, you've got some time here, so let's try to tie him in.
I don't think I have much time. I'm trying to read.
I'm going to start the clock, eh? Start clock.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm trying to be on the subject. What the subject is, is that we're spending, what, about a million dollars here on these items? About a million dollars if you total them up, and, and it's, it's, it's being, it's being watched over by Mr. Stauffer, and he's the same guy who caused, who's continuation of costing the city millions of dollars, millions of dollars. We shouldn't have him here. We need to get rid of him, and so he shouldn't be, somebody else should handle, be handling these water resources items, and I've repeated. And the fact is that I just gave you, I sent you an email that went to Bill Nelson today, saying the same thing. Get rid of Mr. Mr. Stauffer. He's no good. So what I did was, I complained to Human Resources. That's the first thing I should do. I complained to Human Resources, wrote several pages complaining about his dishonesty. So what happened is, this guy, this guy walks into Human Resource, says, "Oh, this is my, this is my business." So he takes it, and he throws it in the wastebasket. I never hear a thing more about it. I hear something from the council meeting saying, "Oh, we've dismissed it, Mr. Stauffer. He's wonderful." That's what he says. That's right, Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Larisse. So he just dismissed it. So we have dishonesty on two parts here, handling millions and millions and millions of dollars. I think y'all should pay attention to what's going on here. This is a big deal. A big deal. Someday, it may go to court. It's right now, it's going to Bill Nelson, copied to another fellow, Mr. Biden. If Mr. Nelson don't do anything, maybe Mr. Biden will do something. Somebody needs to come here to Titusville, straighten you guys out. I just read your Miranda Rights. It's not a joke. Maybe you think it is. Okay, so, so these particular items have to do with dishonesty, 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 and more dishonesty. And if you'll notice in what I sent you today, I mean, I sent you on March the 25th, it has to do with all, all of these agenda items, and it mentions about a waste of over $100 million because of these kind of dishonesties. Over $100 million over the course of 35 years, easily over $100 million. Comprehensive planning is all wrong. In other words, when your, when your flood planes are wrong, it voids all these zoning maps, it voids comprehensive plan, it's all wrong. So all these years, we spent hours and hours and hours with our legal staff, planning staff, nothing. It's all a bunch of nonsense. It's a fantasy. It's not true. And I just told you about nine square miles. It's a big deal. So you can, I've sent this information to you repeatedly over the years to the city. The city does nothing. Fact is, you know what the city does? The city is a repository of FEMA information, repository. So in 1989, when all these, these flood zones were established to the nearest, what you call numbered flood zone, elevation of them, guess what happened to all these records? Guess what happened to these records that the city had? Same thing that happened to those damn records. Records about the dam, not damn records, but weird records. Okay, so, so in other words, they're gone. They're gone. And I've repeatedly requested, "Hey, let's get them back. Let's get them back." The city won't do it. Of course, they won't do it, because it shows that the city has cost the public millions and millions and millions of dollars, and they continue today. Nobody's interested. Well, this is a fantasy, what you guys are going to, and I read you your rights because, and it has to do with Mr. Stauffer, what he's doing with 8C through E, and it's a big deal. And you, it may come to a head here in the next few months, especially when we're, we're asking for an investigation, and it has to do with what's going on here. I don't understand why it's been going on so long. It amazes me. I mean, right now, y'all got a, okay. But anyhow, let's get back to this, this thing. Let's try to pinpoint some of this. For example, the $300,000 on, on 8B, that's a lot of money. The $854,000 on 8C, do we really need that? The generator contract and so forth, you know, on this generator contract, you know what happened over there at Carol Avenue I'm talking about? I saw, I saw with my own eyes sewer coming out of the manhole for over a week at a time at that manhole, that lift station at the end of Carol Avenue. I bet it was never reported to anybody. The city just kept on dumping and dumping and dumping. You could see it go out. In other words, the sewer was just coming right out of the lift station. It's not a surprise. Okay, so, and then on AE is the purchase of software upgrades for the Water Reclamation Facility Operating System. You can, you want to understand what's going on, is that, is that we had just an item recently, a consent agenda item. Anybody believe this? We had a consent agenda, a consent agenda item, you know, you just vote on it, and, and how much money was it for? It was just a few months ago. $10 million. $10 million, $10 million committed, and guess what it was for? Reclaimed water, improving reclaimed water. In other words, what we're gonna do, we're gonna take nutrients out of the reclaimed water, so when we, when we spread, when we, when we put the water, they won't have the most nutrient. Now we have to fertilize them more. Does that make sense? $10 million, $10 million. It wasn't a must, but we, but we're spending public money, $10 million through Mr. Stauffer. $10 million.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm asking for another four minutes.
I see none, sir.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
All right, counsel, any comments? Uh, Member Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, uh, Member Jordan on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, city manager.
On to ordinance's second reading, public hearings and related action items. This is item 9A relating to ordinance number 12, 2021, of temporary offices in industrial zoning.
Ordinance number 12, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 28 zoning of the land development regulations to allow temporary offices as an accessory use in industrial zoning classifications and specifying standards, specifically amending Section 28, 342 accessory use table, and creating Section 28-374 temporary offices, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on June 2, 2021, and recommended approval as written with the following, following recommended changes. Under item C1B, the administrator may approve the two-month extension, and city council may approve additional extensions after the initial two-month extension. Also added to the subsection H, temporary pervious parking may be approved during the site plan process of the site permits by the administrator, and the motion carried 7-0. On May 11, 2021, at the request of a citizen, the city council approved advisability to develop an ordinance to permit temporary offices in industrial zoning. The draft ordinance addresses the following issues related to temporary office: minimum lot size, maximum number of units at one time per property, maximum time duration of placement, location standards, and permitting requirements. During the council discussion on May 25, 2021, the following issues were discussed: minimum lot size of one acre versus five acres, length of time of the offices could be placed in a calendar year, setbacks, zoning districts in which the offices could be permitted, maximum lot coverage, and approve the time extensions by either the, the city council or administrator. Staff proposes changes to the ordinance reviewed by city council on May 25, 2021, and they're in your packet. Mr. Bisaka's going to brief you on a, a change that was made during.
Mr. Bisaka, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I wanted to go over the changes. These are shown in yellow on the information that you have in front of you. The first is under the temporary office. We did change that to a one-acre minimum lot size, and there was a question about building coverage. We have suggested a 70% building coverage, which is the maximum building coverage permitted in the M1 industrial zoning. The other zoning categories do not have a maximum percentage, so this would be more restrictive for PID than it currently is, but that's a number for you to look at. The second was the issue of an extension past the six months for the temporary units. The planning and zoning heard the, or had a discussion about whether the administrator or the city council should provide extensions, and so their recommendation is that the administrator may extend the time limit for two months past the original six months, and then if more time is requested, the city council would give two more. And there was a question about when, some criteria for the extension, and so those criteria have been added as the temporary structure has been found in compliance, as evidenced by review of code enforcement, and the extension is submitted because the office is required for continuity of operations. I think that that would address the issue both of operations, such as been suggested by the Astrotec firm, as well as something that was brought up at the last meeting, if someone were doing some internal renovations and needed short term, so I think that that would cover that issue. The next issue is in C, the Class 1 site plan, and some additional language was added this evening. Staff has been reviewing the Astrotec site plan, and we have not yet come to a point where we can approve the proposed site plan, so we're asking for some additional flexibility, which would allow a, well, let me start again. There, today, if you were putting 1,000 square feet or more of impervious surface on a property, you have to have stormwater. What this would allow, if absolutely necessary, is that the approved stormwater requirement could be waived for six months in the event that this temporary structure would end up creating over 1,000 square feet of impervious surface. That would allow the staff to work with the applicant, should they decide they want to extend this, so that they could design and improve or enlarge an existing stormwater facility. In the case of Astrotec, we have found an old site plan, and it is possible that they have enough stormwater that they can handle this additional, and that, that we wouldn't have to do this waiver, but the engineer has not yet confirmed that with calculations. So this allows some flexibility in that area. There's also some additional language about driveways, and this is under H, and it, temporary offices will not be allowed to impede driveway access points, ADA parking bays, or access, and also maintain the ingress egress paths. That language was taken from the ordinance that allowed the temporary school structures on there. That has actually worked very well for us, for, so we thought that that language was appropriate. And then we clarified under I that the provisions of the land development regulations are not waived, except as contained in this code section, which are the waivers that you see in front of you. The, there was also an addition to H, that temporary pervious parking may be approved during the site plan process by the administrator, and that would allow, in the event that there is insufficient parking permanently, that would allow them to have a temporary parking for the duration of these temporary offices. And that was recommended by the planning and zoning, and both of the recommendations of planning and zoning, we think are very helpful, and staff appreciates their input and would recommend those changes.
Counsel. Uh, Member Jordan?
Yeah, certainly appreciate this, this. I think what you have done was basically show that government can work with industry, but also what I like is the proactiveness that you've shown to make sure something that may come in the future, we actually have something in place, so it won't have to come back to us, or the, the applicant have, doesn't have to come back to us. And I just want to remind counsel, this is an industrial area, so some of the things that you wouldn't want to have in a regular development, certainly in the industry area, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on there, and it's all about business. So kudos to staff, kudos to how you've actually worked to make this happen in a, in a very timely manner, so thank you so much for that. I do have one other, one little question, and it actually is not in the yellow, I didn't realize this, but I thought it was kind of funny that we actually have something in the landscaping that says that the standards that was prescribed in Chapter 30, which is on I, I'm sorry, Key, building landscaping shall not be required unless required by city council. I thought it was kind of funny that we would actually see, you know, you don't need it, but council said, yeah, I want to see some flowers up there or something like that. But anyway, that's not part of, of this thing, but I just happened to see that and wanted to comment on it. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Jordan.
On to staff.
And before I move on to the next council member, I would agree with Member Jordan, but I also have to, kudos for the presentation, that I can see everything that I need to see right there. That's, that, I'm not having to run all over the computer. Uh, Member Stokel.
Yes, thank you. Yes, just to echo kind of what Member Jordan and Mayor Diesel just said, thank you for this. I feel like we have covered everything. I also want to say thank you to P and Z. I appreciate their recommendations, that helps us out a lot. I did just want to clarify the first one that you talked about. A, the building coverage maximum shall not exceed 70%. And then you said that's not required in other zoning, can you just explain why you think that might be beneficial?
Well, actually, this was brought up by, I believe it was Vice, I think it was, I think it was the Vice Mayor, who suggested, we were talking about setbacks and overbuilding a site, and so there was a suggestion about having a maximum coverage. And this is the maximum coverage that was already found in the code for any industrial. This is something that the setbacks will limit where these can be placed, so if council is not comfortable with this maximum setback, with, I'm sorry, the maximum coverage, it's here because it was based upon the concerns that was expressed at the last meeting.
Okay. I just don't know if we need it, I guess was my thing. I don't want it to potentially be an issue, just because I'm viewing this as something that is temporary, six months, maybe a little bit longer, I just don't know if somebody does have that issue, six months there, I feel like it would not necessarily bother me, but that's my two cents.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
I, I agree, it's a great, great job here. I think my only concern was I didn't want to see it, and I have to rely on your guidance, Peggy. I didn't want to see it where we had a lot where everything was just crammed together, and there's no room to move, there's no room to park, there's no room to do anything. So I'm sort of looking for you guys' guidance.
In the case of, of the issue of Astrotec, they have 62 acres, this is fine for them. In the case of the one-acre site, there may be an instance where this is pretty.
Tight.
Tight. Now, I think that there's a, a number of ins, pieces of insurance in here that might make it better. One, trees can't be removed.
Yeah.
Required vegetation, so those vegetated buffers cannot be removed.
Okay.
They, we are still stating that they have to have the, they have to stay out of the right-of-way or easements, they can't obstruct vehicular or pedestrian traffic, so it, it may look tight, but we believe that it will, the site will still be able to function because of these conditions. So if you're concerned about unintended consequences, I think we addressed the functionality perhaps more so than the way that it looks, because it is temporary. I don't know if that makes you feel any better or not.
Well, question though, do we need maximum coverage?
That was really only put in there because of a conversation that was had here. So if you do not feel comfortable with this, I feel comfortable that we can ensure that this, that the site will function.
Okay, and I think that was my concern, was I didn't want a site that, you know, we're having problems, we're having accidents because we're trying to.
Right.
Okay, so I have no problem if the rest, everybody else wants to take it out. And then I had a que.
All right.
I'm sorry, Joe.
I'm sorry.
And then I had a question. So the, this is just for my education, the temporary pervious parking, what does that look like?
It probably looks like grass or dirt.
Okay.
It might be that someone puts down some kind of mulch, gravel, we kind of look at as pervious.
Okay.
Because water doesn't necessarily run out, so because there's not any additional stormwater for this, it would probably be parking on grass.
Okay, just curious.
Thank you. Member Robinson?
Yes, uh, my concern, again, is the, the 70% is a, is a standard that was already in the ordinance, is that correct?
The 70% is only required in the M1 zoning category. There, there are no maximum coverages in the M2, M3, and in this case, the PID does not have a maximum coverage, and that's where this is being permitted.
Yeah, I see, I like the 70% because it, it may keep us out of danger in the future, because if we start taking, and you just stated that because they are in ownership of over 62 acres, that 70% will not be an issue, because if we start taking things out, and we don't know what's coming at us in the future, so that we, to state it, that's my thoughts on it, and, and it's not bothering anything with this particular project and, and what we're trying to do here. So let's use it as a safeguard for things that may come to us in the next.
Member Jordan?
Uh, I, sorry, respectfully disagree with you, because I'm thinking about my property, and, you know, I don't have 62 acres, but I've got three acres, and that requirement in there may cause me not to do my business. So, you know, I, I don't believe in government just putting stuff in just to put it in, and then it turns out I have to come and spend 1,200, $1,500 to try to get it out of there so I can do what I need to do. So I, I think by consensus, I think most of us agree that you really don't need to have it. I understand what Member Robinson is saying, but I just disagree with that. Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Yep, just to touch on that too, and Member Robinson's point, I think what makes me feel better about taking it out is this is, if I remember correctly, the map, this is not that many properties that this will be under, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's a very small percentage of the city, I feel like, so I feel okay with doing it, but yes, very good point, and I would tend to agree if we had more of that property, but I feel like this is just a small amount, that's why I'm in favor of taking it out.
Uh, Member Robinson, are you done, or?
I'm.
Okay. Uh, if no one else is up, call the cards.
David Mandernack?
David Mandernack, 2645 slash Pine Court, Titusville, speaking on behalf of Astrotec. I wanted to echo some of the things that have been said about the speed with which the city has helped us out with, a, a challenge for us. And I, I think I coined the phrase this afternoon in a, in a correspondence, that the city has moved at the speed of commercial, commercial space. And, I mean, we're, we're making all preparations for the arrival of, of these two missions, and we have a lot of challenges that go with that, but the city has kept pace with us and has worked very, very well, back and forth between our technical people who are coming up with requirements that have to be communicated to the city, as, so this is what we think it looks like now, and, and the arrival of some of these spacecraft, you, you do not have crystal clarity, because they, in some cases, can't tell you, depending on the type of mission it is and so on. So the disclosure of information, the communication of information, and the dealing with information has kept pace, and I, I wanted to express our appreciation for the city working as quickly and as cooperatively as it possibly can, given that there are constraints. Now, it's been mentioned that we have 62 acres, and for us, it's not going to be a challenge on, on some constraints, about the 70% or something like that. I do, you know, originally, the, the discussion was five acres, and then some of the lots and some of the, the future properties might be as small as one, given the, some of the other constraints that the, you know, you have to have water retention, you have to have buffer zones, you have to make sure some of the trees that are, are there that you have to work around it, it really begins to hem in, so you, I think you kind of have to decide how, how small, small is, and how flexible a future person coming up here might, might need, and so that may or may not fit very well for the, the smaller properties that are around where Astrotec is, but not specifically for us. And then I'm here to answer any questions, if you might have any.
Council questions? I see no questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Any other cards?
Um, last card is Stan Johnston.
I'll try to be quick. Stan Johnston, P E. I think it's a good thing to do. Uh, but also I add something else, is that I'm not sure about this subdivision he's in. But, um, uh, and I don't know when it was approved, but it so happens that the St. John's River Water Management District has really done some bad things. For like, I, let me tell you about Century Medical Plaza, you know, that's the plaza off of Buffalo Road down there. Uh, I, I was an engineer on that. It was all proved. It, we went through, uh, um, I think it was called DEP. Yeah, I think it was DEP at that time, Kinclaws. And, uh, went through it, all, everything was approved for stormwater for all the lots. I have a big pond in the middle there. And so years later, the city, the, St. John's River Water Management District said, uh-uh, we're not gonna let that happen. Uh, you know, they weren't even the, um, they weren't even the agency reviewing it. And what they did was they required a bunch of people with their lots to, to put retention ponds on their lots. It's a terrible thing, so I'm hoping it's not happening for the subdivision also. It's a terrible thing that they did. And they got away with it. Dirty rotten, dirty deeds, done dirt cheap. So thank you. So watch after that. I think planning, uh-
This is a industrial-
Thank you. That's all.
Just FYI, this is an industrial park. It's not in, in the subdivision.
I believe it is a subdivision.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, any other cards? All right, council? Uh, Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twelve, there's twenty-twenty-one relating to temporary offices in industrial zoning.
I have a motion.
Second for discussion?
I have a second with discussion. Member Stokoe?
Just want to clarify, is, that is with the staff and P and Z recommendations excluding C A regarding the maximum coverage? Taking that up? Yes?
Yes, my motion.
Okay, second stands.
Motion with a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Go ahead, man. You can do it. Yes.
Long as it doesn't come back to Bobby. Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, I would say, um, that passes unanimously, but I'd also say that we've said all along, this is kind of a pioneer ordinance, something that's going to, I think, uh, be in effect and, and have an effect for decades beyond. And, uh, we, it may be adjusted as we go, uh, long after we're gone. But I think it, uh, I think it's very important, uh, we're moving fast. And I learned a lot as we went through this process, how quick things are moving and how different, uh, you know, firms are coming in and doing different work. So I appreciate that very much, and that motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto item B, which is ordinance thirteen twenty-twenty-one, impact fee credit transfers.
Ordinance number thirteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four procedures to include provisions related to transfer of impact fee credits consistent with state law, specifically amending section thirty-four dash four twenty-six, impact fee credits, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their meeting on May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and recommended approval as presented seven zero. In twenty-twenty, the Florida Legislature amended provisions of the Florida Impact Fee Act related to impact fee credits. Section one sixty-three point three one eight zero one of the Florida statutes was amended to provide the impact fee credits are assignable and transferable. The proposed ordinance states that impact fee credits are assignable and transportable, uh, transferable, consistent with Florida statute and may, as may be amended from time to time. And Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions, and this is your second reading, final public hearing.
Uh, Ms. Busaka?
All we're doing is just acknowledging what the statute says.
Thank you. Uh, council? I see no council. Cards? Whoa.
Mayor, I just want to point out the statute is attached.
Right.
And if anybody would like me to read that, I'd be glad to, if anyone wants to.
I don't, truthfully, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't-
No.
I've got it. Okay, thank you very much. Then with that, um, I will, I see no, uh, Member Jordan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and council, I move that we approve ordinance number thirteen twenty-twenty-one, impact fee credit transfers.
Second.
The motion, Member Stokoe, seconds. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
That's a yes. That's a yes. It's unanimous.
That passed six to zero?
Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, City Manager?
Onto, uh, nine, nine C, which is a brewery ordinance, ordinance number fifteen twenty-twenty-one. And this is the first reading, no action will be required.
Ordinance number fifteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-eight zoning of the land development regulations to add craft brewery, craft distillery as a permitted use with limitations in the tourist tea, community commercial C C, downtown mixed-use D M U, shoreline mixed-use S M U, regional mixed-use R M U, and urban village U V zoning districts, amending the permitted use with limitations to require a conditional use permit in the urban mixed-use U M U zoning district, and amending the definition and standards of craft brewery, craft distillery, and removing microbrewery as a permitted use with limitations in the downtown mixed-use D M U zoning district, specifically amending section twenty-eight dash fifty-four Use Table, section twenty-eight dash two oh four Craft Brewery Craft Distillery, and deleting section twenty-eight dash two thirteen Microbrewery, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty P M. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on June second, twenty-twenty-one, and recommended approval with the following recommendation: to change any zoning category that allows residential uses to require conditional use where the proposed brew pub is within a hundred feet of a residential use. Otherwise, the brew pub shall be permitted as a limited use. The motion carried seven zero, and Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions on this, your first reading.
Very good on the first reading, Ms. Busaka.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
You seem to have some. Member Stokoe?
Yes. Um, what are your thoughts on P and Z's recommendation?
Uh, the staff feels very comfortable with that's recommend, that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Can you explain that recommendation?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
In the event, there, some of our districts, uh, are mixed-use districts that allow residential and commercial right up against each other. And so the change would be that any category that allows a residential use, there would be a conditional use when the brew pub is within one hundred feet of that residential use. So that would come into play in the, um, shoreline mixed-use, in the downtown mixed-use, in U M U, any of those, if there is a residential within one hundred feet, that brew pub would have to be, uh, a conditional use rather than just a limited use.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nelson?
Thank you. If I remember right, so correct me if I'm wrong. If you have conditional use and you have a pub, that there's a number of complaints and it comes back to us, is that correct?
It, yes, there is, there are provisions in the code that a conditional use permit can be modified or rescinded by council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Robinson?
And I, I think that, that to, uh, Member, uh, Deliana, that in, Member Nelson, uh, I, that hundred, that hundred feet, is, that's a concern because I understand that the, uh, the brew, uh, facility is, you know, they have to consume all of their, you know, their product, basically. It can't be, you can't, and, and so forth. And, uh, it has a tendency to come with a little noise from time to time. And, uh, with, uh, Member Nelson asking the question that it can come back before us if, uh, the resident starts to, uh, complain. Uh, and, uh, that conditional, with certain conditions, uh, that they have to, uh, maintain a certain noise level and, uh, parking, it has to be controlled. Uh, you know, that hundred feet, if the parking gets out of hand, that, uh, you know, that it can be, uh, taken up quite quickly. Uh, so those are the concerns of mine when, when, uh, about the hundred feet. I don't, particularly, I don't think that's far enough, uh, but, uh, but I understand that we have that and we have some, um, avenues that we can take if it, uh, does come back and begin to, to be a concern.
Got that? Yes, um, and I would agree, and that's kind of why I like the fact that this is a first reading, and those questions can come up and staff can, can deal with those. Do we have any, um, examples? And you don't necessarily have to get into names of examples, but do you have any examples where we have, uh, a hundred-foot buffer that is working or that it's not enough with a restaurant or a bar? None you can think of?
I'm happy to do that research and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you. I have at least one, and I'm thinking of at least maybe two that would meet that, which I would then want to find out how that's worked. And again, I'm gonna stay away from the names. Okay, with that, um, this is the first reading. Do we have any cards?
One card. Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Um, make, make sure I get this right here. You shook me up, Stan. All right, so we now move on to, uh, ordinance first reading, ten.
Right, on, uh, ten A, which is ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one relating to grease interceptors. And the superintendent will read this first reading.
Ordinance number sixteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Titusville, Florida, revising, modifying, and amending Chapter twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances, Article three, Division eight, Grease Interceptors, Section twenty-one dash two forty requirements by amending grease interceptor code changes, amending Sections twenty-one dash two forty A one, twenty-one dash two forty A two, twenty-one dash two forty C two, and twenty-one dash two forty C three, deleting Sections twenty-one dash two forty C one, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty. And Ashley is available to answer questions that you may have on this first reading.
I know we just spoke about this in CRE, so I doubt that you have any, um, presentation you want to give, but.
Nope, unless you thought of some questions.
And, uh, Member Stokoe might.
Sorry, I'm on the question roll today. I just want to clarify, um, when I'm reading the first section, I believe it is, A one, where it says, "All newly constructed facilities excluding single-family homes will be required to have an external grease trap." Does this allow for flexibility for them to have an internal grease trap? Like, if the, if what they're opening is smaller or they're not doing as much?
So right now, if it's a new, like, virgin land that's gonna build a building, they would not have any flexibility. They would fall in a category one. Existing facilities will fall into the second category, which does have the flexibility. And we, um, just to add to that, we did that mostly to incentivize redevelopment.
Okay.
Um, and typically, with working with the various developers, we haven't ran into as many problems with new sites. It's more existing facilities trying to fit either the grease interceptors or the many challenges that come with redeveloping a property.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, so thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I think, from you know before, that we can try to help those that are trying to open up different facilities. Um, I feel like I had a second question, but I forgot it. Maybe I'll come back, see if anybody has any.
Yeah, well, before we get too far away from Member Stokoe, I'd like to just reiterate that through the years, um, I've had some phone calls concerning, uh, grease traps and how, depending on where you're at and, and what you're under, it can cost you seven hundred dollars. It can cost you seven thousand dollars. And that, that's a concern. And I, I don't know if there's something to say, go back and look at that, but I can tell you that that's a concern. Um, you know, if it's existing or it's new, however that's all determined, there are some that would like, wait a minute. You know, this guy just did it for seven hundred dollars. It's gonna cost me, you know, sixty-two hundred. I, I don't have the answer for that, but I, I'd like that to be a little bit more, um, widespread. Uh, Member Jordan?
Yeah, I, I'd like to go through a couple of examples, and so you can tell me how this thing would work. Someone wants to open a hot dog stand in an existing building, uh, not in the CRE, okay? What, what would they have to do?
So they're gonna fall under Section A two. And so they will have to engage a design professional, which could be a licensed engineer or a licensed architect, who's gonna look at the Florida Building Code to size a device. It could be internal or external, and it can be whatever size based on their various conditions, whether that's flow, their menu, their oper, operating hours. All of that would come into play-
Okay.
-in that case.
All right. So if we did not do anything, um, today, that person would have to do an external grease trap and all of that?
They'd have to do an external grease trap today, unless it was determined there's not sufficient space. And that's where it says on a case-by-case basis in today's language.
So that took care of the hot dog person, and if someone is downtown in the CRE, then they'll do, since it's an existing building, then they'll get a registered professional, go in and decide what is the best method of doing it.
Mm-hmm.
And then the city would accept whatever the professional says.
Yes. Yes.
Without question, as long as they are professionals.
I think one of the best things is we reference the Florida Building Code, and that takes a lot of responsibility off of staff. That's a state regulation. There's been a lot of reasons the state code is the way it is, right? And so it, as long as it follows those regulations, then yes, there should be no reason why not to approve it.
Okay. Is there an, uh, I guess it wouldn't be an appeal if, if they're gonna hire the professional, correct? So if there's gonna be an argument, it's really gonna be an argument between themselves and the professional before they even come to-
Most likely.
Yeah. So actually, that's a kind of a win, win-win for everyone. Well done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before I move to you, Member Stokoe, let me ask, coming off of the same thing. Did I hear you say some of it depends on hours of operation and other things?
The Florida Building Code gives multiple ways that you can design these devices. So sometimes it, a design professional could consider that they're gonna use their best practices, determine should I base it off of flow and fixtures and operating hours, or should I just only look at flow? There's reasons why you do that for different facilities, but that's why it puts that on that design professional who's gonna basically be sealing it instead saying, this is, this is why. And then present that, of course, to the city for review.
Okay. Obviously, my question is, what the heck does hours of operation have to do with you needing a grease trap?
Um, it just could vary the flow, something that's open longer, like a fast food restaurant that's open twelve hours versus maybe a sit-down restaurant, um, that's only open for dinner, let's say. Some more upscale restaurant, their flows are gonna change, so it could impact that.
My, my concern is, and you've done a great job in presenting and answering questions, you've done a great job. But my concern is fairness. Um, and I had a specific call that hits me with that, and it's been a while since I got that call, but the call was, uh, based on, maybe it was the same call, but it's based on a hot dog stand, uh, in, in Indian River City area. And the grease trap issue kept him from moving forward. And I don't know that if this grease trap works for seven hundred and fifty dollars, why I have to go do the ordinance, uh, to get a sixty-five hundred dollar grease setup. I'm not the expert. I don't own a restaurant. I'm not, I don't know that I could identify a grease trap if it was shown to me. All right, maybe I could. But that being said, I'm not trying to say what's right. I'm trying to say that's going to be the issue. Why am I having to, we'll have people stand right there later and say, are you kidding me? This guy right over here just paid seven hundred and fifty dollars. He's doing great. I can't get started because I need six thousand dollars. I'm throwing a number out there. I don't know, but something like that. That's something I think that needs to at least be looked at. Member Stokoe?
Does the Florida Building Code address hours of operations, or no?
It's not so much the Florida Building Code, but the best practices on how to design and calculate flows and use with these different, with what's inside the restaurant. Like, if you have a dishwasher or a three-compartment sink, those things come into play. So it's really gonna be plumbing-related codes.
I get it. I, I, I feel like I definitely understand. I would be curious to see how that would work if somebody says their hours are only nighttime, and then they say, hey, actually, I'm going to adjust my hours. Now, what would we do in that case? You know, go and force them to do something different?
So one of the key words that we put in, in A2 is we said, "existing new facilities." And so the reason that we thought of that is, is there's existing facilities today that maybe have it under the sink device, we're not requesting that they get reevaluated at this point. So it would be somebody today, like the hot dog stand who doesn't exist today, or an empty facility, and somebody moves in, then they're going to engage a professional and size a device. But existing devices, for lack of a better term, are kind of grandfathered.
Okay, so say that we do approve one, and, you know, we determine the flow is fine, and then they do expand their hours, does the city go back in and monitor and say, hey, you're now having more flow?
Some of the other provisions of the existing code that we did not change talk about the maintenance of the interceptor, so there could be an opportunity, if a device was insufficient, that we could have those conversations. I don't think adjusting their hours would trigger anything necessarily, but if we found a device was insufficient, that's how we would address it instead.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm happy with this, I feel like, in the future, if we do, I would like to know if we do have citizens concerned with a newly constructed facility to maybe readdress it at that point, but I am happy with this. My other question, maybe for the city manager, I know we had talked before about potential grants, maybe using the CARES dollars, is that something that we could potentially look into, or?
Absolutely, and I think that's what I got from a advisor bill, or, you know, at the CRA, that at least CRA was interested in it, and since five of you are part of that board, I assume that that's something that we would like to, to move forward to. And it's underwater and sewer infrastructure improvements, so we, we're using the similar logic of trying to get code liens into compliance and the BTR relief.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
All right, thank you, anybody else? Any cards?
Sorry, Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Okay, city manager, old business?
Yeah, we have no old business, on to new business, which is the Sandpoint Park Sewer Spill Update and Consent Order Number 210113. Over a five-day period, the city of Titusville Water Resources Department worked to complete one of the most complex repairs of its wastewater systems experienced in 20 years. A leak of the sanitary sewer main, which was located 10 feet below the surface of a stormwater pond and covered it on a concrete slab. Titusville was able to contain the majority of the discharge from the spill in a storm, in stormwater ponds in which the sewer main was located, and the nearby stormwater pond by constructing an earthen dam, thereby minimizing the impact to the Indian River Lagoon. An estimated 7.2 million gallons of wastewater was discharged during the event, and approximately 3.3 million of contained water from the ponds had been recovered and sent to the city's reclaimed water facility for treatment. An investigation, an investigation as to the cause of the pipe failure concluded that the force main failed as a result of improper installation during the construction in 1998. Following the spill, multiple bubbler aeration systems were installed in three stormwater ponds to accelerate the cleansing process, and thus the recovery of the water quality in the ponds. Titusville also delayed reconnecting the two Sandpoint Park stormwater treatment ponds to the lagoon, long beyond the point at which the bacteria levels had returned to normal. This water was held and managed by the city within the ponds until April 24th, 2021, so that the maximum amount of treatment possible could occur. Before the ponds were reconnected in the Indian River Lagoon, the bacteria nutrient levels had returned to normal. To resolve this unauthorized discharge, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection issued Consent Order 210113 to the city of Titusville. The consent order includes a monetary penalty and a number of problematic, programmatic and capital improvement requirements. The monetary penalty was mitigated through a pollution prevention project with the installation of BMATs. In May of 2021, the city contracted the installation of the BMATs in both Sandpoint Park stormwater treatment ponds. The BMATs will remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the water. The programmatic and capital improvements are under design and funding for the completion of these projects is included in the FY 2022 proposed budget. Therefore, as recommended, the city council authorized the city manager to execute the Consent Order 210113 with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Mr. Stoffer has a presentation to council concerning this issue.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm Sean Stoffer, the Water Resources Director, and as Scott said, I have a few slides here to go through, if we could bring that up? Okay, thank you. So I think Scott ran through a recap of the events, so we'll, we'll move quickly through this, and this, just some pictures to kind of remind everybody what we did deal with there on Christmas Eve of 2020 this year. The spill was estimated at about 7 million gallons, and that went into Sandpoint Park ponds, Spaceview Park Pond, as well as there was some discharge at the Indian River Lagoon. So a few of the corrective actions that Scott talked about, you know, we did isolate the ponds during and then following the repairs, we added aeration to the ponds to help the recovery, pumped out over 3.3 million gallons was removed and sent to the treatment plants to help the area recover, and then delayed reconnection until this April, before they were reconnected to the lagoon. So, and then some of the other corrective actions that have gone on since the, since working in the area of the ponds, we have gone forward and inventoried all of our force main crossings. We have located 18 crossings throughout the city where we either run under a water body, pond, stream, ditch, canal, or we run alongside. And this was part of our way to understand and try to find any other potential issues like we faced at Sandpoint Park. So the idea was to find similar pipe arrangements, and so we did find 18 different areas. We did expand it to pipes that run along ditches, because we consider that to be as much of a risk as going under a pond. So of those 18 that were identified, we will be going forward and inspecting each of those, and I'll talk about that process coming up. We have also developed a new specification whereby any new force mains that cross water bodies, go along water bodies, go under ponds, for whatever reason, they will actually come up out of the ground, and we determine as an aerial pipe. So the pipe will be above ground, so we won't have the issue of having to de-water and work underneath a pond, as well as being above ground like that, it's very easy to inspect it as you drive by. And so we actually have a new project coming up, the South US1 Sewer Project, as we've been terming it, and that's where the, the proposed project to move, to build a new force main, heading from the Florida Wonderland Station south down to connect under 405, that project, we are, it will have an aerial crossing of the Addison Canal there on US1. So we're actually going to get to see that, hopefully, here fairly shortly. The other thing that we've been working on is improving the early warning system for spills in our collection system, and so that is under design at this time, it's about 90% complete, and when we finish with the Wonderware upgrades, the Osprey plant, that early warning system will be included. We're also working on the design, the replacement of the force main from South Street all the way to the Osprey plant, and so if you remember, a couple months ago, we brought that to you to have the design approved. One of the other corrective actions that we're going forward with, and that's to evaluate the stormwater ponds, and we're going to be looking at the treatment capacity of those ponds, and I know that was one of the concerns from some of our citizens, so we'll be assessing the water quality, we'll be assessing how full the ponds are, and then we'll be talking about any additional management plans that we may need to take for those ponds. So part of our crossing assessment, what we're going to do is, we will, at each of those 18 locations that I mentioned, we will excavate the pipe, we'll inspect it, we'll take pictures, we'll look at the condition of the pipe, we will also confirm whether or not there are markers indicating there's an underground pipe there. Some of our spills have been caused by ditch cleaning activities, so we want to make sure that those warning signs are there. We'll also check any valves are in the area, and then we'll rank and prioritize any repairs or replacements that need to be made at each of those 18. So the consent order has a number of requirements embedded in it, and one of those is this analysis of the 18 different crossings. And so within the consent order, we have a timeline that you have for each of the steps, and that's built in for a number of the requirements. And so here you have, then basically, they break it down, what the schedule is to have this work completed, so the analysis should be done within 180 days. I will let you know that we're already on the project now, we're already inspecting them at this time, so we don't see any problem meeting the schedule. And then any corrective actions need to be immediate actions taken and finished in a year and a half, then all corrective actions finished in about two and a half years. One of the other requirements of the consent order is that we put together a capacity, management, operations, and maintenance plan, and this in the industry is known as CMOM. They're also requiring us to put together an asset management plan as part of the consent order. And so we have some of the elements listed here, and it is quite a lengthy list, but the good news is, we do about 90% of these things now. But what we don't have is, we don't have a centralized cohesive program that incorporates all these items together. They're in different groups and headed up, whether that be distributed between the engineering department and our field ops group. So this is going to be an opportunity for us to put those programs together, and definitely an opportunity to help improve our performance moving forward. This one also is embedded within the consent order itself, so within 180 days, we'll have a plan and schedule that we have to produce, and then we have until December of 2023 to have everything up and running. We've talked about this a number of times, the consent order also requires us to replace the pipeline from Garden Street, I'm sorry, from South Street all the way to the Osprey plant. As I said before, this is currently under design at this time, and, let's see, moving on, and then the schedule within the consent order is, we're required to be complete with construction by December of 2023. We current, the schedule that we are meeting at this time has us finishing construction in December of 2022. So I have every confidence that we'll be able to meet the schedule and timeline required by the consent order. So, you know, as I've talked through, you know, there, there are, as we said, a number of capital and programmatic requirements, and, you know, just let you know that this is embedded within the FY 22 proposed budget. We'll get a chance to talk about that during the workshop, but it is definitely, there will be additional staffing required, this will take time, there'll be some additional funding associated to meet these requirements. As part of the consent order, there was a monetary penalty for the spill, for the non-compliance, and that totaled $199,000 for the penalty, and then $1,000 for administrative costs from the DEP. So, and what we had chosen to do was to complete a pollution prevention project rather than just pay the fine. And I think Scott mentioned this a little bit in his entry, and if you've not seen them, we have installed BMATs within both the east and west pond at Sandpoint Park. This is a picture of those BMATs in the ponds themselves. The, it include, the plan is to have them there for three years, it would include maintenance across that, and we have been able to mitigate the entire monetary penalty with this pollution prevention project. And so, and, and the reason for these mats is, they are floating grasses, and the roots hang down below the blue mat that you see there, and as they grow, they pull out nitrogen and phosphorus from the water, and they help clean it before it goes to the lagoon. And, you know, we felt this was a really appropriate project, we were able to put it directly into the pond that we put the sewage in. So I think this has a real nexus to the problem that we caused, and it will help the, help the lagoon for the next three years. And so, you know, part of what they will do under the maintenance is, they'll come out and actually basically mow the grasses on the top, and they will remove the material. And that is how you remove the nitrogen and phosphorus from the system. And what they'll do is, they'll take the, the grasses that they cut, they'll weigh them, they'll also do an analysis of the nitrogen and phosphorus content within that plant material, and then we can get a fairly accurate estimate of how many pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus that have been removed from the system and were not sent to the lagoon. So you get a real, it's a real nice way to know what you have done to help the lagoon. And so with that, that brings me to the end of my presentation. I do want to remind that we have a recommended action, that you authorize the city manager to execute the consent order with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I'm going to hit a couple, members, I think everybody's got something lit up here. How do we know, and you, you spoke of the warning system and all that, and I know you guys have worked hard on this, but at the same time, this is absolutely something that nobody saw coming, and I need to know that we can see it coming if it does again, or we'll know that this will never happen again. How do we know? And I know you, you kind of even showed a map up there, where you're going, what you're seeing, and I, I, you know, actually talked to the city manager about that yesterday. I don't know that there is an answer. We didn't know that there was concrete on top of a, a pipe under the ground, under the water, how do we know? And how do we keep it from happening again?
So we've looked at it in two ways, there's two ways that we'll attack that, and the first is, we're going to go out and look at every crossing that we have, you know, every crossing, every time we go under a water body, and, and that was part of the reason why the concrete was there. The idea was that it was to protect it from ditch cleaning. So we're going to go to those areas where someone may have thought that that was a good idea in the past. So we're going to confirm that we don't have that issue with the concrete again.
Well, before you go any further, did somebody tell you that's why they put the concrete there? I mean, did you get to, because you said that's why the concrete was there, I don't know that we knew that.
The, so, so what had happened was, the city's specification shows that to protect pipes that would be in ditches, they're supposed to put a precast concrete cap.
They're supposed to put, who's that?
They, the contractors, as they build.
Okay.
That's supposed to be suspended 18 inches, 18 inches of soil between the pipe and the concrete to protect that pipe. But at Sandpoint, what was done is, they just poured the concrete on top of the pipe itself, and they did not leave any soil in between the pipe and what was supposed to be a precast concrete cap. So the idea of protecting the pipe is good, the implementation of how they did that is what caused the problem. But the idea is that if it had been done once in the past, we need to go out and verify that it hasn't happened in other places.
And that's what I was going to ask next, have you been able to verify there's any other pipe that has concrete poured on it like that?
We have not found any yet.
Have you found pipes with concrete on it?
In our, in, in, in our process of doing the 18, we have not found any other concrete at this time.
Very good, member Stokoe.
I wrote my questions down this time, so hopefully I won't forget. Mine has to do with the early warning system as well, I know you mentioned it on one of your slides, can you explain what that would entail? And the reason I'm asking is, to Mayor Diesel's point, say, whatever happens, even if there is concrete or whatnot, is there some type of system in place that would better measure the flow, or give some type of signal, regardless of what's happening, that we, that staff can know that there's something off?
And, and that's exactly what we have instituted, is a better measurement of flow. And so what we will do now is, we will be able to look at hourly flows and, and compare those hourly flows each hour to a seven-day previous running average. So what we'll be able to do is see if the, if that flow for that time has dropped off significantly, you know, because in the wastewater business, you know, flows are dependent on a customer's usage. So at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, there could be very little flow coming. So at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, there could be very little flow coming through. But that's okay, because there's just not a lot of people up using water. So really, what you need to do is you need to have, you need to set the computer up so that it can look and see how the system has operated in the past seven days or over a long period to see those kinds of anomalies.
Okay, so just to clarify, we were measuring flow before, but not to this extent. And I guess as in depth potentially to, so now with this new system, we should be able to, regardless of what's happening,
That is correct.
Kind of see that something's off.
That is, yeah, that is correct.
Okay, my other question, just to clarify regarding the fines. If we were not doing any improvements at all, is it correct that we would owe the state 200K?
That is correct.
Okay, but since we are doing these projects, we're just paying $1,000?
That is correct.
Okay, and then do you know the estimated cost of the projects we are implementing now?
The BMATS cost about $270,000, I believe, for the installation and three years' worth of maintenance.
Okay, perfect. That's all my questions. Thank you. I know this was a tough situation, so I appreciate all the work you guys have put into it.
Thank you.
When the, when we had the catastrophe last time and we had the leak, was there not a flow number that could tell us we had a leak? Because I know, and I went, I was down there several times, as you know, again, not being the expert, but just being down there. There was a time when we had thought maybe it was even a water pipe as opposed to a sewage pipe. Is there not a way to know by numbers, by meter readings or anything that, hey, we got a leak?
It was not nearly as detailed. We were measuring, we had 24-hour flow totals. So we knew how much we would have in a, in a day. We had an instantaneous flow, like what was coming in at that second. Then we also, we would have, but we'd have to wait 24 hours before we found out how much flow we had in a particular day. And the problem with that is you have to wait a day before you figure out if something is wrong. It's also very hard to see trending that way. So, because our flows do go up and down based on rain.
Okay, thank you. Remember, Jordan?
Actually, most of the questions have been answered. You did a good job for sure. But where, where are the sensors to determine the flow?
They're, they're at the wastewater plant. It's the flow meter.
Okay, so if everything goes to the wastewater plant, then you just shoot it out to be distributed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So part of this consent order was that we were supposed to have this thing in place in 90 days. Did that happen?
Which item?
The, the first item, within 90 days, the respondents shall complete implementation of newly designed early warning system. Did we do that?
That is 90. So everything that you'll read within that consent order is based on the effective date of the consent order. And so, well, the effective date will be the date that it is signed by DEP. So we get to sign first, and this is our first step. And so once the city manager signs it, or once the authorization is given, then we'll send it to DEP. They'll sign it, they'll send it back to us. And then that's the date that all of these, you know, see, everything is based on a number of days.
Right.
And that's where it all keys off of. So we have 90 days to complete that from the execution of it.
Okay, very good. But so as far as, you're, you've already implemented the, the flow thing.
It's 90% complete at this, at this time. Yes, sir.
How much did that cost?
It actually only, just a few thousand dollars extra, because we happen to be doing, putting in a new software package at Osprey for the new Wonderware system. And that's part of our cybersecurity as well as it's, you know, we needed to update the software anyways. So it was very easy for us to just reach out to the integrators and say, can you please add the, these, this additional functionality? And so I think we did it for just a few thousand dollars.
Well done. Thank you, sir.
Are the numbers in the East and West Sandpoint ponds back to normal?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I hope, I'm thinking, I'm a little confused. So Sean, we have this early warning system, which is based on the average flow or flow. And you're comparing it to the flow from the week before.
That's correct.
So with the Sandpoint spill at the beginning, would you have, would there have been that much difference? Would you would have said, oh, we're, there's a problem here?
Because we would have been able to see it at each hour.
Okay, okay.
Whereas now we're looking at a 24-hour period.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Call the cards, please.
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
Incidentally, I'm Stan Johnston, professional engineering. And I'm not, I want to say I don't know everything about sewage, but I did take a class in sanitary sewage and so forth like that when I was in college. And I did pretty well. I was in the Engineering Honorary Society and, and I was even on UCLA. I was in the dean's list. So I asked myself, all these meters that you have, flow meters, and they had a difficult time detecting 7 million gallons? You've got to be kidding. I can't believe it. 7 million gallons, you had a hard time detecting with your meters? 7 million gallons? Do you know what that is? 7 million gallons? That would take, that would take those ponds, in East and West Ponds, it'd be over 20 feet high. That's how much 7 million gallons is, over 20 feet high in those ponds. And they couldn't detect that? Wow. Okay, I, I, okay, I want you to understand is, is I'm, I'm having some criticism from people. Is that they, they don't like me calling people liars and shysters and fraudsters and stuff like that. They just don't like it. I want you to understand is, and they say that, that I'm, I'm accusing them of being liars and stuff like that. Well, it's not true. I want you to understand is when I call Mr. Stauffer and, and, and the city manager, I call them shysters and hustlers. That's what they are. There's no, I'm not accusing them of being that. I know they are. They're both lying about this report they got here. It's just, it's just ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. We've got all kinds of information that shows that, that this report that they've gave the FDIP and so forth, it's nonsense. So what we're looking at is administrative hearing. And I'm, I'm looking forward to subpoenaing a number of city employees on this, because they know it's not right. These city employees like Scott Devine and some other people, and I have police officers that watch the flow. It was, it was just going out of, out of the park and in the river. Not like it's reported in the press, not like it's reported by the city, not like it's reported in this report that you've got. It's all nonsense. So I don't know what you're going to do. So what are you going to do? Expect all these city employees to lie? The police officers to lie? I'm looking forward to subpoenaing them. And so you see what happens. So it's going to be a big deal here. I don't know what, what's going to happen, but there's no truth here. And I know it. We've got lots of witnesses, got lots of photos, videos. So good luck, Mr. Stauffer. Good luck to the city manager. Hope to see you in court. You too, Mr. Brew. You're right there in the middle of it. You know it's not true.
Thank you.
I'd like five more minutes, please.
I see none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Does anybody want to make a move here? Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. That's right. First reading. That's right. First reading, we won't be making a move.
This is not first reading. You are voting on the consent order tonight. This is not an ordinance for first reading.
That's what, that's what you get. Okay, I thought I had a vote written next to it. I thought, well, he, I don't know why, I thought he might know more of me on that one. All right, no worries. We can just continue to move forward. And I ask, and I'm just, Vice Mayor Nelson, straighten this out, please.
I'm getting ready to. I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to execute Consent Order 21-0113 with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
We have a motion. Uh, Member Stokel, you want to second that? I have a, I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
You passed unanimously, obviously. I, I do want to throw out there, and I appreciate your report, and I appreciate your time. And, and I'm sure you and, and everybody on the council and a lot of people are very concerned that this never happens again. And I know that you're probably at the top of the list, not wanting that to happen again. I, I know we all talked about, we all saw, when I was out there, how hard you all worked at that, at repairing that. It, it does concern me. I mean, we had concrete inappropriately poured on top of a sewer pipe under the ground from 1998. How are we supposed to know? And I guess the biggest security to me would be for somebody to say, well, here's how we know. And I think you're doing that, you're working on that. Clearly, this cannot happen again. I am not lecturing, I'm simply saying what everybody here is thinking. This cannot happen again. And you are doing all you can to make that happen, and I appreciate that, maybe more than you know. And I appreciate that more than you know. But that's where I'm at. And I appreciate the, the questions and concerns all the way around. And motion passes unanimously. And city manager.
Yes, sir. We're on item 13, which is petitions and requests.
You're always the second half guy.
Nathan Soscher, 860 Allendale Street. Actually, I want to, I have two thoughts, listening to that, that I want to add that you, you may enjoy. He discussed building aerial crossings where the water crossing is. I think that's a wonderful idea. And I want to know if, or I want to request, when we build those aerial crossings, to put a flow meter in them with a light on it. So if the flow drops, the citizens can call up and say, hey, the, the pipe is leaking. Get, I've said it time and time again, I don't expect government to do everything. So if we can put a system in place where the citizens can tell us when there's a leak and say, hey, there, this, this pipe at South Street is leaking, the light's flashing, and all we have to do is send someone down to check it out. And with the BMATS, he said, we are removing the nitrogen and the phosphorus from the clippings, or we're removing the clippings that takes away the nitrogen and phosphorus. In the gardening and agricultural world, nitrogen and phosphorus are very important. So if there's a way we can give that back to the local farmers to possibly help our citizens in growing their agriculture, I think that would be a wonderful idea.
And both of those are well beyond my yes, no, maybe type of thing. So I'll just leave it at that. If staff has anyone to add to that, and they, Sean, is there anything? The last question about the phosphorus or whatever, moving that over. There's any way to move that chemical one place over or no?
It would, it would be, I guess, composting of the clippings. So I'm not, I'm not sure what our contractor does with them when they're done. But it's, it's simply just, you know, it's like the bag of grass in your lawnmower. It'll be the same.
Well, I could say you could look at that down the road.
Sure, we'll look at it. We'll see what, how he disposes of those.
I'll be very honest with you, and I appreciate the thought. That's certainly a forefront thought, and I appreciate your receptiveness to looking at that down the road. You know, my main deal right now is to make sure we get this first part right. And, and I feel like he's doing that, so, but I appreciate that. Well, good, well thought out.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yep.
Just to Sean while you're here. With, do we have somebody monitoring 24/7 if there is a leak right now? Or do you guys wait for somebody to call in? How does that process look right now?
There are multiple monitoring systems throughout our system. So that we look at the levels of the lift, of the wet wells and lift stations. We are looking at the flows and pressures, but we want to improve it, and that's what this project does.
Okay, do we have somebody monitoring it 24/7, checking the flows?
Yes, we have a SCADA system that looks at all of that all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It even has an auto dialer, human machine interface. And if there is a problem, it will automatically, the machine will call the on-call supervisor's cellphone and tell them that there's a problem at this location.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other petitions or requests from the public? Come on up. Sure, just step on up. Name and address for the record.
My name is Anna Breaman. I live at 1705 South DeLeon Avenue in Titusville. I've been a resident for Titusville for a number of years. Gone away for jobs and always come back to Titusville. I love the city. I'm here with my other residents of a complex. It's called Luna Trail. It's a low-income building that has been built for low-income people. Apparently, the Section 8 and housing themselves have some people inside the building also. And I have lived there for one year now. And at the end of the year, then I have to renew a lease with them. And I go through a complete background of my, the money that I make. I'm on social security now, I'm no longer working. But I was told before I signed the lease that the lease would be exactly as it was for last year. Now, I went into the office, signed all the paperwork, and that was on a Monday morning. The next Monday morning, I found on my door an increase of the rent, almost $100, sir. $100 for a low-income apartment building. Myself and my other coworkers that lived in the building with me, they, they all feel the same way, you know, that I do. We, we can't afford this raise that they have done to us. Now, we are admitting we're low-income people, and we pay our rent. I've never missed a month paying my rent. And I'm rewarded by a $100 raise on my, my rent? This is Sharon, I'm, I'm sorry, Sharon, I don't, she has a lot of the information that we've collected, sir. And I know this is normally not how, something that we would bring to you. But we have been going in a lot of different directions trying to get help with this.
Before we go any further, city manager, we have any information or anything you can add to this? Or anybody we direct them to? Is Luna Trails a?
But they under HTG Housing. It's supposed to be for 55 senior plus, affordable housing. They're out of Miami. But we live in Titusville. They have a company here, they have a company here. When we came, first came here and we applied for this, it sold to us at 635. So when we got here, it was like a different whole, different ballgame. It's like everything was done under the table. So when you.
Hold one second, hold one second. Reset three minutes and give me your name and address, and we're going to start again. Go.
I'm Sharon. I live in Luna Trail, 1705.
Sharon what?
Jocelyn, J-O-A-C.
Okay, we just need that for the record. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, we've been a year. What they present to us is wasn't what we got when we got here. So when we got here to sign our lease and everything, and we done broke our lease where we at, you know, finished living where we at. So when we get here, it's like a false information to us. But everything had done crashed in the, you know, the economy, coronavirus. So it's like, you stuck now because we on a fixed income. And we thinking it's affordable for us to live here. And then it increased, it supposed to be 636, that what they advertised the first time. And when we got here, it was like 705. We paid $50 for washing dryer. We pay water and sewage, our sewage is so high. We don't get billed by the water company, we get billed by their third-party company. And our water bill is like, like actually high, like really ridiculous. And it's like really giving us anxiety. And we don't know, well, we called the Congress today, yesterday, I had a lot of people calling. And we signed an affidavit for them to represent us, a sending to HUD, because it says under HUD. But I spoke to the mayor, somebody in the mayor's office, and they said, just come to the council meeting, maybe somebody there can hear you. But they're saying when we first came in there, we supposed to make 2.75 of our income. And if we calculate the income, a lot of us did not really qualify. So how did they get to this point? And now when they asked us to renew, a lot of tenants did. We did renew. I signed my lease on March, March 18th of this year. After I signed my lease, they put a note on our door, 38 note, that they're going to increase our rate on our rent.
Can I bring this?
Please.
Here, the other one.
I'll have to, one is from last year and then one is for this year. We wanted to show you the increase.
I think I did. I think I did.
So before we go further, and go ahead and stop the clock for me, Clerk, I'm gonna kind of interact here. Before we go further, this Luna Trails, is that the neighborhood? This is a private sector?
It's supposed to be under, it's like under HUD with Section 8 slash subsidized tax re- redemption, debt credit, yeah. That's, you give that one there.
I have a couple experts up here, so I'm gonna be referring in a minute.
And this is the one you're talking about, here. That's the one you want. Yes, it is.
This is how it was.
Go to your microphone so everybody can hear you, including the TV.
I do, sir.
No worries, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody hears you.
The first one I gave you is for this year. The last one is...
That's this year, that's last year.
Yes.
And they just put the note on our door, and it say, attention household members, your utility bill at the top, your utility bill is gonna be this, it's gonna decrease our, then they put in bold print, they put it as rent, what increase if you're in a one-bedroom is $83, two-bedroom is $93, a three-bedroom is $100-some-dollar, I'm not in three-bedroom in one. But we have a lot of residents that should have been qualified for subsidized area, but they didn't, they didn't offer it to them. I don't know if it was like so many percentage they supposed to have. But it's like every time you ask them a question there, it's like they don't want to really answer anything to you, like explain to us, and like, don't treat us like we don't, can't understand, because we can't understand, you know, we got this far, we pay taxes, we vote, we all vote. But the part is, treat us like a human being, like, do you want to live under somebody that keep putting notes on your door, like, okay, here's an increase here, you gotta pay this, you gotta pay the washing dryer. That's $600 a year for washing dryer that we're gonna keep paying every time while we there. And then by them doing a third-party billing to us, we're paying a process fee of our, it's just our process fee of our rent, our water, and our washing dryer. And it's not fair that no one really can explain anything to us. And it making all of us feel, a lot of people moved out. And a lot of people moved in, like, we have new neighbors that's just moved in in June, and they don't even know their rent's gonna be going up, because they signed the old lease. We're signing the old lease, they're giving us the same old lease, but our rent increases January 1st of this year. And it's not on a new lease, because I do have my new lease.
No, you're fine. Go ahead and sit down, but sit close, because we might call you back up. Do we have any jurisdiction here, City Attorney?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know what Luna Trail is. It sounds like a federal program that would not be run or have input from the city with regard to that. We'd be glad to, you know, talk to Terry, whatever programs are available, and try and point them in the right direction, but it's not something that the city would have.
Is there anyone at Harry T. Moore that would know about this housing?
That's where Terry Franklin is, I was referencing.
Okay, right, right. And Terry included, is there someone that, obviously, this is a little bit of a heart-wrenching story to me, I'll just speak for myself. I'm sure other people are like, what the heck's going on? I mean, especially coming out of 2020, let's just face it, things are rough enough, and now all of a sudden, we have, you know, this kind of thing going on. And it bothers me, I just don't know that I'm in the ballpark to deal with it.
Right, it's not something that the city controls. I mean, when looking at the rescue monies because of coming out of 2020, there might be some programs that we could work on that would provide assistance unrelated to HUD. But with regards to those issues with HUD, and I'm sure Mr. Robinson has a lot of expertise in this area.
Well, and what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna skip all the other people for right now, and I'm gonna go over to Member Robinson and see if you've got any light you can shed for us.
And the City Manager and the City Attorney is correct, we have no jurisdiction or anything. It is HUD qualified tax credit project. And HUD raises and sets the standards of what can be charged for rent per ZIP code. And HUD changes that every year, they go up or go down according to what they are dictated to do in Washington DC. The thing that I would suggest that you go, you've contacted HUD, contact the Fair Housing Bureau, and see if you can do, because all of this is, all they can do is that, tell you about the agreement that for the tax credit and what their standards were. And if they tell you those, it gives them the limitation on how much they can do or cannot do. But that is all controlled between HUD and the builder, the contractor. We have little to nothing to do with that locally.
So they contact, I think they already said they contacted their congressman, is that a good move?
Right, that's a good move, and he can talk to the people at HUD. But again, it's still gonna be based on the contract and what they said in the paperwork, and with the tax credit, whatever they sign with the tax credit. And then they have a range that HUD puts out that says that you can charge within this range, and this is probably within that range.
Joe, would it be helpful if they contacted Legal Aid?
Contact HUD, Legal Aid wouldn't do anything. Fair Housing may be able to help you or advise you. But I would stay on the HUD and get, talk to the HUD attorney, see if there's any, anything that is out of kelter, that the contractor or the builder is doing wrong. But they're the one that knows it, and that's what they're going to hold them in compliance to.
Yeah, come on up to the front and give your name and...
Good evening, folks.
Go ahead, load that, there you go.
Good evening, folks. My name is Valerie Fortunet. I just moved in this facility June 1st.
Wow.
I have yet to receive a copy of my lease agreement. It was supposed to have been given to me, which it has not. Sit. In the meantime, when I was looking at the lease agreement, I noticed that I had to jump through hoops of fire and give them my divorce documents, how much money I make, where my money comes from, blah, 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 this, that, and the other. I gave them all of my bank statements. They have taken, because I noticed that it said $29,000 and change as my income. If that was the fact, and if that was true, I'd be out shoe shopping still right now. That is not true. They have taken every stimulus check that we received, went directly into my checking account. They added that as my income, which is, it's not true, it's not accurate. And when I brought it to their attention, to one particular person in question, I won't mention her name right now, but anyway, she said, oh, no, 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 we don't want to go there because you will open up a can of worms. Well, let's open that can of worms, because I want to know, why are you taking my stimulus checks and saying that that's my income? And you're timesing it by 12, along with my alimony check, along with my social security? Why are you doing that? That's wrong. That's a lie. And I will not tolerate, I will not stand for anybody, I really don't care who you are or what your title is, and no disrespect to anybody sitting on this panel. Don't lie on me. Don't do that. It doesn't make me a happy camper. I'm not, I'm not an ignorant person. I've been to college, which is neither here nor there, but I'm just bringing out a point that I'm not stupid. And if my neighbors didn't care about me, they would have never pulled my coattails to exactly what's been going on at this complex. But don't tell me that I don't have a right to question, why are you putting down that I earned $29,000 plus, plus, plus dollars when I don't? Believe you me, if that was the case, I'd be in New York City shoe shopping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. I deeply appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. And again, I think where we're at here, and Member Robinson works with this sort of thing on a pretty much daily basis for pretty much his whole life, it sounds to me like they need to contact HUD. Now, would it do them any good to talk to Terry Franklin to help guide them, or would...
I don't, I don't think so. And it's for your stimulus and all of that, I would suggest that you contact IRS, then ask them how that's supposed to be calculated as far as your income is concerned. Because there are some things that are there that may, you may need to know about.
Well, you know what we all are in question of? We would really, really welcome an audit. Once an audit has been done of this property, then we'll know who's in charge of what, and which way is up, and which way is down. But I don't like being deceived. I don't like being left in the dark. And I don't like people putting things in writing. The ink is already dried, that this is the amount of money that I pull in. Really? Could you imagine the shoes in my closet?
No. All right, well, if you'll move over there and sit down, I'm gonna move this this way. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And truthfully, the more I hear, and the more I gain a little bit of knowledge on this, the more I can have empathy for you, sympathy for you, understanding for you, and apparently, nothing I can do. You know, and that's why I stopped you kind of in the middle, and went to City Attorney to kind of say, do we have anything we can do here? Apparently, this is federal, and this is HUD. And if you haven't, you wrote your congressman, you call your congressman, whoever you got to do, but it does sound like it's out of our league, so to speak. I'm disappointed to hear that's going on. I'm disappointed to hear it's especially going on at this time in our history. And with that, I more than wish you luck, but it seems that's all I can do. And just to conclude, it's out of our league, it's out of our realm here.
Corrected?
At least you heard us.
Yes, we did.
There's not an action for council, they may have legal rights, they may have some claims that they could certainly get independent legal advice. The City Attorney, I can't give.
No, no, I understand that. I'm really asking for myself.
But they certainly could pursue advice from an attorney, given their circumstances, who may be specializing in fair housing and HUD, and let them know what rights they do or don't have, in addition to the information that was provided by Member Robinson with regard to the contacts, because they certainly may have some claims that they could investigate.
Well, the two terms I heard that may give a lead, I heard them over here and over here, is Fair Housing Act and HUD. And I know I don't have to tell you to, you know, to get started on this, and don't let it die. I got the feeling you guys are heading out, and you're gonna get it done. But again, I wish you the best. I love your dog. Poor guy's been more disciplined than... Gee. We got that wrong too. But anyway, thank you for being here, and we, you know, I wish you the best. I wish I could say, okay, let's do this, and we'll take, we can't do that. HUD and housing. Yes, go ahead.
I spoke with a gentleman who was in the Congress office this morning before we came. And he told us that more than likely, it wouldn't do us a whole lot of good to come. But we have been so losing sleep, walking, you know, talking, meetings with them in the office and everything, and it has gotten us nowhere. At this point, we're feeling like we're just reaching out to anyone who can help.
Well, and I'm glad you reached out. If nothing else, I hope you can get an idea that we really do care. And again, Member Robinson, we're fortunate to have him here, because like I said, this is what he does. And he came up with some answers that, I'll tell you what, you cleared that, all those little, all the council members' lives were lit up. They all went out when you started talking. So, thank you guys, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, we did get answers from you. We've got the quote on the yellow brick road.
Well, I hope that's true, and I really do. And, you know, I wish I had more words, wish I had more answers. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more petitions or requests? I don't think there's anybody here that can talk. So with that, City Manager.
Yes, sir, your two, your mayor and council reports?
Go ahead, I'll do like I'm doing lately, and I'll go last. So some lights, any lights, anybody, Vice Mayor?
Well, it looks like I followed you around on May 29th.
May 29th, what was May 29th?
Well, we did the breakfast for the homeless.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And we ended up serving 52 dinners, breakfasts.
When I left.
So it sort of gives you an idea how many homeless people we have. And then we went to the mangrove planting. And you left from there to go someplace, and I went...
Where did I go?
With the people planting mangroves down to the end of Main Street.
Scoby.
Scoby Park, Wild Scoby Land. They have been down there cleaning that shoreline, and it's nice to see it's white. And I think the city's helping by picking up what they collect. But it sort of made me think, this is a really pretty spot in town. And I talked to the City Manager about it. And at one point, we had plans to do a, like a viewing area at Scoby Park.
Yes, ma'am. It was a pavilion that Tim had talked to y'all about. It's been probably four years ago.
Yeah. And at the time, we didn't have the money to do it. And I was like, man, this is just a pretty point. So I don't know if anybody's interested in looking at it again and saying yes or no, but it is a very pretty area. So I think that's it. But in the beach down there is nice, white, and even with the winds coming out of the east the last couple days, it's still white.
Yes, ma'am, if you would like, since that is in the CRA, we could bring back perhaps that concept, if council would like to do that to the CRA.
We'll bring it back here.
I forgot what it looks like, so yeah, I'd like to see it.
I actually do, too.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, I was part of and attended a training webinar with, talking as the representative for the Affordable Housing Council. The webinar dealt with the future planning of land use planning. There's a House Bill that came out 1339 that has changed some of the things. There's three more, there's two more seminars that I will try to be part of. One is Thursday, and the other one is the two weeks from Thursday, to have changed things as far as contractors coming in, and tax credits for building affordable housing in the area, some of the land that was basically unusable for because of certain contaminations and so forth. Some of those things are changes, and what the city has to do with, what has to be brought before the city. So as I get more details and things, but it is House Bill 1339 that changed a few things on, as far as affordable housing is concerned, and contractors that wants to come in and get tax credits like this. But their problem is something that does, that's tied with something else, and I won't talk about that on this line. But I will give you enough briefing. But it was a good seminar, one hour webinar. It was a good training webinar for affordable housing, and it's gonna put some good information on our plate as a city, and dealing with possible contractors coming in to do things on some of the land that may have been usable at one time, or may not be usable. And we may be able to get some more affordable housing in the area with some of those things, right? But I give you more, a little bit more details about it as I learn more. But it's a good seminar. But if we can get a copy or get hold to House Bill 1339, it's a big start.
Thank you, sir. Any other council reports? No, and no. Before I even say anything on my council report, I just want to thank you, Member Robinson, for having your expertise. And as I say that, I think about the... And as I say that, I think about the entire council, there's, there's certainly things that Member Jordan adds from the business and construction side of things, from his, his time at his school and his, his business. And uh, certainly, uh, Vice Mayor has got the law stuff going on and asked some questions that sound like law stuff. And uh, you know, certainly, uh, Member Stokoe with education, and specifically, um, EFSC education. I just feel like it's well-rounded, and um, I appreciate that, today it really came, came to fruition. Um, I, I would just reiterate that, uh, what Vice Mayor said about us feeding the homeless last Saturday, we do, that we did a breakfast with Rotary, and it's eye-opening. Uh, we, and I, I did, I think everybody realizes that, I don't need to get in a lot of detail, but it's very eye-opening, very concerning, uh, heartbreaking in some cases when some of the homeless come and they have their kids with them. That was a killer. And then I'll be honest with you, it was, you know, I'm, you know, I'm susceptible to the cuteness of dogs, and a couple of them came with their dogs that were in need, now, you know, I didn't say we gave them a breakfast, but they certainly, I'm like, man, yeah, yeah, another thing. So that was, that was, uh, rough, but I'm very glad we did it, there's a need out there. And I, I know the police officers out there, see that all the time. Um, last week, and I don't remember the exact day, but I went to, I think it was Thursday. I went to the, uh, port and the Carnival, New Carnival ship, Mardi Gras came in. Uh, but what that really ended up being, and, and I knew it would be, was basically support for our cruise industry. And there were, um, uh, Senator and Congressman representatives there, and, uh, many government officials, and certainly our port commissioners. It was basically, um, you know, let's get this thing rolling, and I, and I hope that we're getting close, so we'll leave it at that. Uh, went to both graduations last week, as I said, and, um, Titusville was awesome, it was awesome to me. For one thing, the freshman class, when I left in eighteen, were graduating as seniors, so that was kind of the last connection. And then Astronauts was totally amazing, and, and unfortunately, one we will always remember, because we got poured on heavily. If you were in town and you saw that rain, that was us. But, um, it was amazing, uh, the, the, it was almost inspiring, because they kept going, Astronaut just kept going. And I've got pictures on my phone where the principal's holding the umbrella over the speakers, just kept going. And then at the end, man, my hat's off to them, I'd never seen this, and really nice fireworks display and music as they ended. So hats off to Titusville for an excellent, uh, graduation, and my last real connection there with the class of twenty, twenty-one. And, uh, Astronaut just never quit, just kept on going. Um, mangrove, and that's, that's pretty much it. So, uh, we get ready to move into our summer break, and I'm sure you'll speak to that. But I looked at the calendar, that's a pretty long break, so bring, bring your suitcase for the next meeting. So anyway, and, and, and just a, a quick thing, because we never get to do this, but, uh, city manager and city attorney, I appreciate you guys greatly. I know there are times in our meetings that you don't know why you're, why I'm here, and, you know, get a little nervous about my passion. Um, but that being said, I, I very much appreciate you guys, and uh, that's the best way I can put it. I, uh, I certainly couldn't do what I do if you guys didn't do what you did, and I think we can all say that. So, uh, thank you guys very, very much. And with that, city manager.
Yes, sir, we have a great team, and I'd like to, to mention, uh, that the, the partnership with Brevard County Schools continues. Um, Officer Jackson and other officer went through training this weekend, Madison Middle School provided their school to the police department, so we could do active shooter training.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, I, I think you will attest, having been in the service, it was great training, probably some of the best training that, that I've seen. And we were able to make sure that our team is prepared as they can possibly be, should something like that occur. Um, second, um, a, a couple of information items for you. The, the CBTG allocation from HUD has been changed, so the adjustments are in, um, your, uh, information area. And we compiled, um, uh, an update, because the community development department is just running as hard as I think I've ever seen them. Um, and so, we, we know how, we have a lot of stuff going on. Um, but until you put it on, on a document where you see the forty-six projects that we have underway in our city, it's, it's amazing. And to see the, the variety and the magnitude of these projects. Um, we also provided the website, this is a GIS website, that you can interact with that. Um, we, we put together a GIS interactive website as well, um, about road paving, road resurfacing, which we sometimes get a lot of questions. One of the questions of late is, we have done a lot of additional repaving, thanks to council's mid-year adjustment. We, uh, we are gonna end up this year at eleven point eight miles, and going into budget. Um, we normally budget for six, so we're doing this proactively because of the price of petroleum. We wanna make sure that we got as much as we could done, done under the old contract, which was a much lower rate than what we think we'll see in the future. So, kudos for staff of being proactive and trying to get that done. And we got some long, you know, some major artery roads done, so really happy with the team on that. Uh, next, uh, is we are going forward with the, the Fourth of July celebration, our Independence Day celebration on July fourth. It'll be at seven to nine-thirty out at Chain of Lakes. And we will, are foregoing any food trucks or any stage work or anything like that. Like people to gather, um, enjoy the Independence Day celebration with your family, watch the fireworks and head on home. And hopefully, uh, the Fourth of July celebration in twenty twenty-two will be different as long as, and hopeful that we can put a Christmas parade together as well, because I know we all missed that this year. Uh, provided your budget workshop dates for you, for your information. And subject to your question, on behalf of our five hundred and forty employees, uh, we hope council enjoys our recess. Um, we actually enjoy your recess quite a bit as well. So, uh, thank you very much, and enjoy your holiday coming up.
Thank you, city attorney? Wow, this is getting good, okay, uh, Robert Jordan, you wanna talk a little while?
I do not.
Okay, uh, with that, I too would like to thank you guys, and, and I know that you're not going anywhere and all that stuff, but enjoy the rest of your summer and Fourth of July, and the five hundred and forty employees, uh, you know, be nice and have a happy Fourth of July. And let's enjoy our break, and?
Do it.
Do it.
Adieu.